Good evening. I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Ms. Kearns?
Here.
Ms. Miller. Tell him, getting dementia. Ms. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Chesney?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here. I'm here.
Mr. Richmond and Ms. Whitney will be on soon. She's trying to connect with us.
I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
A motion.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is our second?
My second.
Thank you, Mike. Call the vote.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Traore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes? All approved? Items of discussion? Dr. Hedgecourt?
So, the first item you have for discussion today is the end of the year budget for FY25, which is the fiscal year that just ended. That budget that we give to the board is really a document to help clean up, meaning when our auditors come in in September, they will look for what our budgeted fund balances were at the end of the year. And if we have any fund that we budgeted for that we went over budget, they will note that in the audit. And so this is basically to give you what the final FY25 numbers are for the end of the year. Please note that when you look at that budget amendment, that that does include all of our bond expenses. So you can see the years before, the revenues that came in for that time outpaced our expenditures. And then, of course, this year, the expenditures outpaced the revenue because we received that $20 million from our bond in FY24. So be happy to answer any questions. And then, of course, you can see the fund balance that we've been discussing for the last couple of months for the end of FY25.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time? We're good? Thank you, Dr. Hedgecourt. Facilities.
Okay, we're ready?
Mm-hmm.
You have a packet here that has a little clip on it, so if I can draw your attention to that. And I appreciate the written guidance from the board as far as what you are wanting in regards to our two high school model. And so I'm going to go through this kind of item by item, if you guys are good with that. And so you've kind of tasked us with looking at the systems Benton Hyde and Central and then Lafayette and Central. Some of these items within those one through nine will take a little bit longer to gather the data, but we are going to touch base on all of those points tonight and just keep it as a talking point for September's board meeting, October's work session, and then also October's board meeting, where hopefully we'll have a direction from the board. So I do want to make note that the board requested an option with Ellison being retired and field still functioning. So if you look at your packets, you have those numbered visuals. And I just want to point out, number one, the flow chart also goes with number one, the next page with all of the numbers. So those are just two different ways to look at that system, so hopefully that makes sense. Jake Kelly has this kind of a brain with all of the numbers and charts. And Ashley has this kind of a brain where I need to see the flow chart of the data, so whatever works for you. But both of those are there. And then also wanted to let you know, options three, four A, four B, and five all show feeder patterns that would be the Benton Hyde combo. And then options one and two show the Central and Lafayette combo. So we will start here with the very beginning, where you ask for a feeder system from elementary to middle to high school, with a focus on keeping classes together as they progress. So all of those have that in here. We also have the plan for early learning centers that are noted at the bottom of those. And we have the reduction in overall buildings noted on each one, and then the feeder system with estimated enrollment count. So when you see those little numbers on the flow chart, that would be enrollment numbers for that building. So I just want to make sure all of that made sense. The second piece was boundaries for each of the schools with percentages of free and reduced lunches. So I wanted to have our Director of Nutrition Services, Becky Shaunick, is going to come up and explain the complexity of calculating that. Thanks for being here, Becky. All right, so with CEP, just a little background. Anytime if a school qualifies for CEP, then we feed all those students free breakfast and lunch. In order to qualify for CEP, you have to have a certain percentage of your student population come in on what's called the direct certification list. Our current CEP cycle that we are on, we polled those numbers from April of 2023. And for a school to qualify for CEP, they needed 40% of their student population to come in on that list. That is a list that comes directly from the state. That's not something that we come up with. These are all students that have been identified as either residing in a home that utilizes food stamps or SNAP benefits, or that come in labeled as homeless. So when we run those numbers, we see what those direct cert percentages are. And if a school was over 40%, then they automatically qualified for CEP. You are able to do it on a school-by-school basis or as a district as a whole. So if your whole district is over 40%, then you can do a blanket. Ours does not, so we did a school-by-school basis. You also are able to group schools together. So if you have a school that is close to reaching that 40, but not quite, like some of our schools were either at 38 or 39%, we can combine two schools to average out to that 40. So that's why there are some sites, I get questions on how did they qualify for CEP? They were probably very close to that 40%, and we combined them with another school so we could include as many free sites as possible. The downside of CEP is that it does create an impact on how much reimbursement we are able to get with our lunch counts. So when you're not CEP, you're able to do, you have free, reduced, and paid statuses. So you have your students that come in on the direct cert list, and they're automatically free. But then you also have students that qualify for free or reduced meal prices based on their applications and are income-based. And you're able to get reimbursement at those free and reduced rates for all those students. Whereas if you do CEP, you can only claim that free reimbursement for your percentage that comes in on that direct cert. So if you have 40% of your students come in on that direct cert, then you can only claim 40% of those meals at the free rate. And then all of your other meals are claimed at the full pay rate, which is significantly less than the free and reduced rate. Any boundary changes we make, we lose our CEP status because demographics change. So with our current cycle, this is our last year of our current CEP cycle. We do have an option to extend that to the '26, '27 school year. But if we change any boundaries, then we have to drop our CEP status for a whole year. And then in that school year, we have a chance to reevaluate. We poll the direct cert percentages as of April 1st of that year to then apply it to the following school year. I know that's a lot, and it can be kind of confusing when you're not working with it every day, but it essentially comes down to how many kids come in on that direct cert list.
So I'm going to ask questions.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I know, I went through a lot.
No, you're good. But I really have one that's a simple one, one little bit. So there are actually three categories, because I always hear free and reduced as one category. But there's actually a free and reduced?
There's free, reduced, and then full pay.
Okay.
So your students that are free, we get the most reimbursement for those free statuses. We get a little less for reduced. And then if a child's full pay, we get very little reimbursement back on those meals.
And so anticipating, this is jumping ahead, but anticipating that some boundaries will change. And so we have eligibility this year, but that would disqualify us for next year. What's the financial impact of being disqualified for a year?
Actually, when you do CEP, you actually run a risk of losing money. If you have a lower direct cert percentage, you're not able to get as much reimbursement. So for example, if you have 100 students in your school, if you don't do CEP, you might have 40% that qualify based off direct cert. But then you might have another 20 that are free based off of income, 30 based off reduced, and then the rest would be full pay. So you would actually be receiving more reimbursement if you went through applications. Because if you go CEP, then you no longer can claim the free or reduced rate on the students that qualify just based off of income.
Thank you.
And the CEP requirements have changed within the last few years. At the time that we applied, the direct cert percentage needed was 40%. It is now down to 25%. And we discussed this last year as a district. We found that it would have too big of a financial impact if we went that route. We would lose approximately $3 million in reimbursement if we went that full CEP route. So that's why we maintained our current status and did not reapply with those new percentages.
And I was right with you in that the reimbursement for need, I'm calling it, not the CEP, reimbursement for need, is that, are we eligible for that next year if we change boundaries?
If we change boundaries next year, then we would have to cancel our CEP. So then every site would then have to go back to all application-based.
So, but if we went back to applications, we'd still be eligible for some reimbursement?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, just instead of only five sites requiring applications, we would have to get applications from all 23, or however many sites we have. Yep.
It would just be a change for our families, too, because we haven't done those applications for so long, and they were difficult to get in years ago. And so, not that we wouldn't be willing to bring those to every opportunity we could get them from parents, but just, it would be a change.
Yes.
Right.
So I have a question. So if we reapply, then it'll be the 25%?
Or do we still get to apply at the 40%? We would still have our current, what we're currently doing, yes. But then regardless of boundary changes, we would be reapplying for the '27, '28 school year.
At the 40%, though?
No, it would, well, it's just the minimum would be 25%. So some of those schools that were maybe at like 30-some, they would then qualify. But that's where we would see that loss in reimbursement. Because if your direct cert percentage is so low, you actually end up losing reimbursement over time, that then it becomes a detriment to the district for us to miss out on that reimbursement.
So I'm trying to process this. So is CEP money really helpful, or can it be harmful?
So.
Money-wise. One more topic on money.
Money-wise, it can be. Up until this past year, we had been able to come out positive. So we have kept our CEP status for our sites because we were able to kind of recoup any lost reimbursement we had. And that was through COVID funds and things like that. So this last year was our first year that we saw where we kind of took a hit with that. But it's always a double-edged sword, because we always cited on, we would rather take that financial hit if we're able to, if we're able just to feed all kids for free. So there's give and take with CEP. You kind of take that risk of losing that reimbursement. But then there's that positive of families don't have to worry about applications. Our office doesn't have to try to sort through all of that and try to collect all of those. So up until this past year, we just decided we would take that hit because we were able to.
But so there's a possibility we might not be able to take that hit moving forward? Okay.
Correct. So that would be a discussion for a whole other?
Yes.
Whole other day?
Yes.
Well, thank you for that. And thanks for managing it right. It sounds super complicated. You know, I think the board's primary concern, as we talk about free and reduced, is just an indication of making sure we don't get too far out of bounds with any changes that we make, boundaries, school buildings closing. We don't want to get too far out of bounds with a student profile that doesn't come somewhere close to being equitable, right? And I know that's not 100% possible, but in other words, we're trying to make sure, hey, we don't, we have a good mix of demographics, including finances. You know, the only indication we really have of that is free and reduced student lunches. So I think I speak for the board. You guys jump in. But I think the main concern is not so much what it does to the program, but what it does to the mix of students in any individual building.
More academically?
I think so. Well, academically and just socio-economic, right? So we don't, you know, the criticism you hear quite often is, oh, well, you know, you want to put all the rich people in one school, you know?
Right.
And that's what I just want to get a good feel for, that we've looked at. No, we've got a good mix in each building, you know?
Gotcha.
Yeah, Mike, I agree with you, but I do think this is a good additional information.
It really is, yeah.
Because there's also a financial one.
Correct, correct. Agreed.
So I appreciate the presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question. Is this even a thing that they're able to predict? Well, because if we're moving the boundaries of every school, are we able to get like a landing spot of each school?
No.
We were discussing this earlier. It's hard to predict exactly where those direct cert kids are coming from, because a big portion of them are, they move around a lot. That's why when people look at CEP sites, sometimes they get confused. Like, how did that school qualify? Because I know this neighborhood is here. And sometimes it does come down to one or two kids kind of tipping the scale. For example, if we had polled CEP this past April, Truman, for example, they were two kids short of being at that 40%. So it's all just depends on what population of students are at that school that year. So we can kind of look at trends across the years and poll it, but ultimately, it's hard to predict exactly what those direct cert percentages are going to be.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Well, and then in the past, it's easier if you're able to look at the schools. But if the lines of the schools, you know, change, it just makes it two times more difficult in order to be able to tell, so. I do appreciate you trying.
Difficult to predict, but we wanted you to hear that from the expert in the field.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah. That's a pretty good explanation.
I tried.
And I think, too, one more point with that. On the data side, so for all the kids that are in the schools that are CEP, they all become free and reduced. So in Power School, they're all marked as free and reduced, even though if they were at a different school, they may not qualify. So that's where it gets hard to predict when we're doing the boundaries is, because every kid at Hyde right now is free and reduced. But that wouldn't be the case if some of those kids were moved to a different school.
Understood.
So that's where it's hard to get good numbers for you on that, yeah.
Okay. Can I make one other comment about that, though? I appreciate you saying that. And I won't do this all night. Well, I might, but I'm trying to.
You're okay.
Because, so you're saying, then, that consequently, we may be reporting higher free and reduced lunch than what we really actually have?
I would say we are.
Yes.
Because, just because of the nature of the program.
And I don't, I'm glad, I think that's a good clarification, though, because what I, all of these things add up to saying, how do we feel about our district? And how do we feel about our system? And how do we feel about our community? And I think that we certainly want to do that with a financial advantage. I'm not saying we don't. But I think the idea that says, you know, we're not a blighted city is an important thing to mention as well, you know what I mean? And there may be other districts that have less of that than we do, but we're not the leader in that. And so thank you for that clarification.
Anything else for Becky?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
On number three, four, and five on the list, we've kind of talked about. So all of these options are seven, eight, middle school model. And Benton Hyde, as noted on there, would be the only one that would allow for early learning expansion at Pershing. And then number six was reduction in buildings, so that's all noted on there, too. Jake is the one who is responsible for creating our maps. So you have all of those at your stations that Jake just completed today. He's going to go over those and just see if you have any questions about the specific lines where they're at right now. Everything is edited.
Yeah, nothing, this is proof of concept, right? Like, nothing is set in stone, so that's why I gave you guys these and kind of want you to understand this is general regions, so you can see how these different plans work. Do you just want to go through each of them real quick?
I think that'd be great. Thank you.
Yes, please. Now, it'll take me a second. I can't load them all at once, because they're, takes a lot of memory. But we'll go through one at a time here, and I'll get them. Okay, first one, we'll just go through in order here. So the, did it connect me? I bet it did. The first one we're going to look at is Plan One. So in this one, where Central Lafayette, it sounds to me like I'm feeding back here or something. Okay, the first one, we go with four middle school models to Lafayette. The schools that will feed to Lafayette would be Coleman, Oak, Lindbergh, and Field. And then the schools that would feed to Central, Edison, Parkway, Ellison, Carden Hosea, Spring Garden, and Scape.
I might just note on here, too, if you look at the population for Lafayette and Central, just, it wouldn't be exactly equal. I know that was something that the board wanted in the past, but we wouldn't be able to have equal offerings again. But you would be able to have potential retirements of buildings to save costs.
Any questions on that?
I'm just curious.
Yep.
If we close Webster?
Yep.
Then where would those programs that are currently out there, where would they go? Or do we just, do we not know that potential yet?
So we would look at those other spaces. For example, if you look at Bodie or Ruhmadu, there would be space there, so we would just, and the capacity we'll get to in just a minute, too. And it shows you the capacity that we have at Webster currently. And so we would put some of those special programs programming into a specific building.
Okay. Anything else on Option One?
On any of these, Carter, Macbeth, that you or one of the other staff has, I know you gave that list of positives and negatives, too. But any highlight of that, I think we'd be open to as we look at that.
Sure. So I'll focus on Lake. I've been told from some folks in the community that Lake was closed because of the train and the stoppage there. I don't know if that's still a reality for Lake. I haven't heard any of those issues from Lake. But keeping with this model, we would be able to expand with Pershing. So I think that's a bonus. It would tie into expanding early education.
For early learning?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, gotcha.
Yeah, you bring that up, and that's going to be, that's one of the areas that I want to discuss, because I think that is a community perception. We closed Lake seemingly for a reason. And then we recommissioned it as early childhood. That was already raised some eyebrows. And now to say that we go back and that's a elementary. And I'm not, I don't mean the tone to be negative in that. I just think that's one of the things that the community is going to ask us about.
Yeah.
If we choose that. And there's some other scenarios that have that, too.
Right, right. The other thing I would draw your attention to is just looking at the middle schools in themselves. It would still have capacity pretty low in those four buildings. And the elementaries are a little bit larger. So there'd have to be some shifting of staff. And administrators included in that.
And to answer the questions about Lake, I mean, I think that the community just has to understand, you know, that that was all different admin and all different board, all different reasons, you know? I mean, we can't answer, you know, to why a board X amount of years did this. All we're able to do is what we're able to do now.
Yeah, I think one of the things, I think one of the Yeah, I think one of the things, I think one of the ways, though, that we could help people understand is to, um, is to make sure that people understand that the facility is fit for use for an elementary school. That'd be the kind of thing that I think we'd say, we, that we made improvements while it was preschool, if that was the case, and that, and that now it's fit and able to be converted back to an elementary successfully.
And Delo's nodding her head, anything you want to contribute?
I'm gonna go for, for Spring Garden. Spring Garden's an elementary school that we're using as a middle school. I'm just gonna say, there's a lot of different options here, I'm, I'm really personally just wanting to hear what the administration, I know we're gonna go through all of them, that's fine. I'd just like to hear what the administration is recommending, um, but I also, I would prefer, only one vote, that whatever we do is going to be the least impactful to the least amount of staff and students. So, you know, if we can leave Lake where it is, it seems like they've been doing well there, if we can leave it the way it is, I would prefer that. If we can leave the middle schools the way they are, we've had other plans that, that leave them out for, that's gonna be my preference, but, carry on.
Thank you, Whitney.
Anything else, Delo?
Um, I was just gonna say, we did, um, put a lot of extra money back into Lake, so it is a well, um, constructive construction. There's been new fencing, there's been playground, yes, we did put money into Lake, it, it looks great, it's a great school. So it could be great for early learning or elementary. Um, the downside of moving an early learning center is the playground, you cannot move the playground, so that would even add an expense, um, to have to put it at another location. However, elementary students could enjoy that, but you would have to add some older age equipment also there, so. Um, to answer your question, I guess, it's, it's, it's for both purposes, depending on what the needs of the district is.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jake?
Okay, so, no more questions on one. Um, number two, if we look at, is really very similar, um, to Plan One in terms of Lafayette and Central, except we go to three middle schools and pretty much use the capacity of Benton as a middle school. So the disparity there at your middle school level, um, Bodie at about three hundred, Rubidoo about two seventy, and Benton then would be about nine seventy-five, um, feeding to Central. So, there's a, a wide range of, of, um, student numbers there, but it's because of, if we want to, that plan is, if we want to utilize the capacity of the building that we have, then that's how we do it. Okay, um, on this one, um, you'll notice there's more closures, because if we have three middle schools, that gives us Spring Garden and Truman that we can convert into elementaries, and then we can close Ellison, um, and split those kids up between Skae and Oak. So that kind of pulls that one in, Truman's a bigger school than Ellison, so that gives us some added capacity and allows us to close that extra building.
The last question.
Again, I would just point out the low numbers of Bodie and Rubidoo, so just a little inequity there.
Yeah, and that's based off your capacity of Lafayette, right? So Lafayette can fit about eleven hundred and fifty kids comfortably, so in order to do that, that really splits us up about eleven hundred and almost nineteen hundred at Central.
But I'm anticipating that would also be the most cost savings because of the Pickett, Hyde, Ellison, Webster.
Correct.
So, we'll just keep on pointing out different things as we go along, if you guys are good with that.
Yeah, okay.
And then in all, and then in all honesty, I think that we expected inequities in numbers, well, just because we're, because there's not a new building, in order to even out the numbers, you know, we just have to work with what we have.
Right, correct. Um, so then, let me close out some, close out these, so my computer's still happy with me. As we move to, those are our two plans for Lafayette and Central. Um, then, as you guys asked us to look at Benton and Central model, um, I think it was discussed at the last meeting, the only real feasible way to do that is to include Benton with Hyde as a high school campus, um, and then Central. So that gives us some different options. Um, Plan Three, um, would pretty much stick with, um, the four middle school model, um, with about twelve hundred kids between Benton and Hyde and almost eighteen hundred at Central. Um, that's kind of to keep Central about where it is, and then you're basically combining, not the, not combining Benton and Lafayette, but combining the number of population that would be there. Um, so, with this model, um, you can see, we're looking at Field being the elementary school that goes away. Pershing, once again, becomes a early learning center. And the shift with the Benton model is we need elementary school space in the South Bend. So if we do that, that's the reason Lake has to become, um, an elementary school again. Because Spring Garden would still be needed as a, a middle school down in that area. So the only way to, to do it and really not throw kids around as much as we can is, that's, I'm still connected, is to repurpose Lake back as an elementary school, and then we would be shifting the South Bend Early Learning Center would go out to Pickett.
And in addition, at Pershing.
Yep, yep, so you'd shift Lake to Pickett, and then Pershing would still be added as a third site.
Two quick questions on that. Maybe because the next three all have a Benton-Hide combination.
Yep.
Um, maybe some explanation of how we would use those two buildings together to, now, I see the capacity number, but how would that, how would we functionally use those two buildings together? Would the freshman, would some classes be in one building and another, would the freshmen be in one, or what's the feeling on that?
So we've talked about that as far as with that, and you make services, and we.
Could you also add ADA accessibility and like the specials going back and forth?
I'm sure it's about ADA, I think.
Could you repeat that, Whitney?
Could you also include in that answer what that looks like for ADA accessibility and stu-, and specials?
So we. Yes, we talked about having electives or specials out there, but we've also talked about beginning the career pathway work, and that could be an opportunity to, um, house different pathways in that facility. You want to chime in?
Yeah, um, we've gone into a different sites where eleventh and twelfth grade looks a lot different, and we have done some partnership work with Missouri Western, where some of our students are actually reporting to the early learning, uh, our early college academy out there. Um, just maximizing that space to very think, um, more innovative in the work, especially at eleventh and twelfth grade, um, when they're doing apprenticeships and internships, um, and getting their experiences, um, on the university and at Hilliards. A lot more programs open up there, and so what could that potentially look like, the space potentially at Hyde, um, with the, um, college and career pathway work?
Thank you.
Some of this kind of gets into the long-term vision that we have, too, that I'm gonna talk about at the end, so I will come back to some of that, though. I just want to go through these pieces, and then we'll talk kind of long-term, what we're thinking, yeah.
I, I have a question, too.
Yep.
Um, when we're looking at the difference between Pickett and Lake, is, are the capacities for kids about the same numbers for those two buildings?
The capacities aren't the same, but Delo expressed that having fifteen classes at each of the early learning centers would be ideal, and that will hold that.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that we're not going to less spots.
Yeah.
By doing that, okay.
Miss Duter had mentioned that there would be different things somewhere, so is that gonna require students to move back and forth between those two buildings?
Yes, it would.
And then how will that happen?
We don't have all of those details at this time.
We don't have those details at this time?
Correct.
So I, I think that that's kind of a, to me, that's a lynchpin for how we even move forward in this. If we don't have an idea of how they're gonna move back and forth, how we're gonna get kids in wheelchairs, kids in crutches, if we don't know how we're gonna get kids back and forth, then that's really, I don't know how we move forward.
We've talked about it as far as having staff out there to assist, but we don't have anything in writing to that detail right now.
I just think if we are gonna move forward, I'm only one more number, I would think if we're gonna move forward seriously about this option, that is a huge piece that we need to understand.
Thank you, Whitney.
Anything else on number three? Okay.
Okay, so Plan Four, you have A and B. Um, it's pretty much the same feeder pattern, or the same boundaries as Plan Three. Um, so, the difference is on those, we can do a little bit more leveling of the numbers, um, between the two schools. Uh, for A, you'll notice, I mean, right now, um, Benton's at fifteen thirty, Central at fourteen sixty. Those can be tweaked, right, we can level them, we can throw more in Central, we can move a few kids around here and there based on how we draw the boundaries. But that's pretty much set up to level, um, the two high schools to be the same. Um, be- because DLR said our, our max capacity Benton with Hyde would be around sixteen hundred, um, that we could fit if we're packed. So, um, we could do that and have both high schools, um, at the same student capacity. Okay, um, you'll notice there, um, Bodie, um, Truman, three eighty, Spring Garden, four thirty, Bodie, two fifty, and Lafayette about five hundred, um, leaves you some space for programming if you need to. Um, also, um, gives you the option of, if you want to combine Lafayette and Bodie and make one middle school for the north, that would put them about seven fifty, um, which is well within Lafayette's capacity, and then you have a, another building that you can either close or repurpose. And I would say you could do that, you could use Bodie or Truman as your third middle school. Um, I know that stuff that we, we had talked about, there's pros and cons to each setup.
Yeah, so Truman has actually two gym spaces, but not to have competitive events, so there's no seating. And then Bodie does have the gym with seating, so that was just something we discussed internally.
Yeah, yeah, and then the other side of that one really was just the location of the school. Bodie's located in a district that would be going north to Lafayette and back to Central. The building is, but, or, sorry, the building is, the kids around it would be going north and, and all the kids that would be going to Bodie would not be within that district. See what I'm saying? So Truman is in the district of the schools that would be feeding to Truman. Bodie, just a couple blocks north, but it's not technically within the boundaries of the district, of the elementary schools that would be feeding into it.
I got you, but both Plan F's use Bodie and Truman, right?
Yes.
Yes.
The only difference between A and B is Ellison.
Looks like it's Ellison, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so then.
Yeah.
Yeah, Plan B is then just shifting Ellison to feed to Bodie and Central. So that puts Central at sixteen seventy-five and Benton at thirteen hundred.
Got you.
Okay?
And then the last one, is it? Just like these other two, only removing Ellison?
So, it is different. So, it's the same concept of you, but you close Ellison, but it's to keep Field open. Um, you'll notice in all of Plan Three and Four, Pershing and Field both close, because we repurpose, Rubidoo is an elementary. It's got a greater capacity, and it can kind of absorb the enrollment from both of those schools. So the option of keeping Field open, um, really presents some challenges as far as, um, boundary creation, to not really surround one school with a different school. Because you'll have Rubidoo, Lindberg, Field, and Coleman, all within a small area of town. So you've kind of got to like finger out and around to get the capacities to feed that school. Um, which is loaded here in just a second, but you guys have the math. You can see, um, on all the other ones, we try to keep blocks as much as we can. Um, with this one, because of that area, um, how it's situated, you're really affecting, Lindberg has to come down and around Field. Um, Rubidoo kind of stretches around both sides to get the capacity for it. Um, and it shifts most of Edison further south, where in all the other plans, Edison is pretty good about being around the school. This one, it shifts most of Ellison, which then, or Edison, sorry, which then in shift turns, um, shifts Parkway and Carden south, because you've got more schools up north, rather than having Ellison at the east. So that's the, that's the difficulty with boundaries that it presents, but.
Is it, is it possible to consider, um, having, having Field at Bodie and having, or I'm sorry, having, um, having Field at Lafayette, having Oak Grove at Bodie?
For Plan F?
For Plan Five?
Yeah, or, yeah, sorry, Plan Five, sorry, I'm going by my math names. Um, yeah, so, I mean, you can shift those schools. You can have Coleman and Oak go to Bodie, and Lindberg, Field, and Rubidoo go to, and Edison, right?
Well, I, even Edison stay at Bodie's, Bodie's growing up, right, with, um, with Coleman, Edison, and Oak Grove, I'm kind of looking at that.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, you can shift those however you want. The problem's not with the middle school space with this one, the issues with how you have to draw the boundaries for the elementaries. Because you've got four elementaries, really five with Edison in such a small part of town. And I mean, that's where a lot of our kids are, but it's just, it presents some challenges, um, that the others don't.
Moving Oak would also cause Lafayette to go down in enrollment, which it's already under capacity at six oh four. Just a thought.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at that, I just think, um, I think in some ways, um, I think it's something we ought to keep in mind.
Yeah, and I would say, too, like, if you look at this, with Rubidoo up north, um, that's gonna absorb most of the enrollment that's currently at Field right now. So your demographic at Field is gonna change dramatically, because with all the schools up north, everybody's pulling south. So you're pulling from, more from midtown to feed, feed Field than you are from the north area of town like you were.
Something I might mention on all of the enrollments that you see, is these enrollments are today's enrollments.
Yeah.
So our prediction is that these will slightly drop over time. So you're seeing the highest capacity they would be, whichever scenario you see. So just know that over time, those will drop slightly, so.
And real, I mean, it's different, they're last school year's kids, the end of last school year, and the middle school and high schools are projections off of those kids. So that's not the current middle and high, I wanted to see if we changed these borders, where are those kids gonna be once they hit middle school and high school? Because that'll give us more realistic numbers moving forward, right?
If you look at these models, are there like a top two recommendations of administration?
Yes.
Okay, which ones are there?
Do you want to go there now? Wait till Ian. I'm sorry. I do, I have a little bit more disinformation and then I was going to get into that. I do want to draw your attention to the school capacity. Because I think that's an important piece as we're looking at all of these. I just want to tell you the information that we considered before we came up to the recommendation that we are going to mention. So on here, on the school capacity sheet, I do want to tell you a little correction. This Lafayette data is from the 2021 Vision Forward presentation, but Lafayette has also been updated with some special programming that's in their facility at a couple different spaces. And so Casey gave me some updated information of capacity that I want to share with you. So he recommended one thousand two hundred and fifty would be optimal. And one thousand six hundred and fifty would be the maximum capacity. So I'll update this sheet and give this to you, Donna, so you can put it simply for the public also. But I think this is important when you look at it, to see where we have capacity right now and how much buildings can actually hold. So all of that percentage of the current enrollment is based off of the optimum capacity, not the maximum capacity.
Dr. McGeese, can you say those numbers again? The optimum capacity at Lafayette?
One thousand two hundred and fifty. And then the maximum is one thousand six hundred and fifty. And then also on this enrollment sheet, the early learning centers have special criteria. And so, Dilo, do you want to speak to that at all?
So depending on the type of classroom we have, if we have an early childhood special education classroom, if we have a half-day reg ed classroom, full-day classroom, we have different numbers in each type of classroom. So for example, A, low incidence, which would be a medically fragile, more really involved student, those types of classrooms, we're only going to have four to five students in the morning, four to five in the afternoon. Same way with some of our self-contained classrooms. Then our integrated classrooms, these are all early childhood special education, that have some reg ed peers along with our early childhood special education. We have a total of twelve students in the morning, twelve students in the afternoon. So you still get your twenty-four students, right? But as we look at our models, when you start going to a full-day classroom, which we have some of those for reg ed, those are going to have eighteen students in there. So it's hard to figure by classroom, it's really about the type of classroom for the type of students we need to serve in those classrooms, if that makes sense. So when I came up with our model and our numbers, I took currently the types of classrooms that we have. And with the expansion, the idea would be we would have similar types of classrooms with the expansion. So those could vary depending on the needs of our students, right? So if we ended up having more needs in the early childhood special education realm, or if we chose to change our programming model where we decided to do all full day for our reg ed instead of some half-day, we're going to see less kids and so on. So that number, or those numbers that you see are kind of just a best guess estimate from the types of classrooms we currently serve to expand similarly. Does that make sense?
Yeah, let me ask, is there a need to expand to a third site?
Yes, so we have around two hundred students right now that we've screened that we have not offered placement. That doesn't mean they're all going to accept placement. But we have about two hundred that, and I'm going through right now and hoping to offer around fifty to sixty more kids by October one. So as we screen our students through our Parents as Teachers program, we give placement to students with the highest needs first. And then also, if that's part of our child find with special education, our process consultants look through, and so we really have an obligation to get those students in. So you're going to see some three, four, and five-year-olds that aren't age-eligible for kindergarten. Where our ADA or our grant classrooms, those are students that have to be one year out of the year before kindergarten. So when you say that, yes, we, we still have a lot of kids that want in, a lot of parents want their kids in. It may not always be the type of classroom, you know, that, that they're hoping for because it's where we have those little spots. It's just like a puzzle trying to fit all the pieces together.
I, I think that probably is important. And, and one, I realize how complicated those numbers are. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't even know how you do it, but it might be good to show that there would be an increased capacity. And so we would have a better picture of what the need was for the third, third location.
There's definitely...
Yes, and we have funding opportunities, and so I think that's a big piece. That as a district, you know, that goes off that free and reduced lunch number. So we have an opportunity to add more reg ed classrooms for our students that are the year before kindergarten. So that's like an intervention, right? Trying to get our kiddos in so that they're school-ready. So if they were to qualify for free and reduced lunch, then we can claim ADA, you know, SAT funds for those students, so.
Well, I, I, that sounds wonderful, because I think more school readiness, that's, that's good, that'd be great.
That's what we're hoping for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dilo. Okay, going back to this list, if you look at number six, seven, and eight, all of those are very difficult to calculate. And our team is trying to calculate all of that data based off of the various options, which makes it pretty time-consuming. So if Robert and Mark would like to chime in on those pieces at all?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start with number six. I think the impacts are real. It's, there's a chance within our district that the perception that we have some instability is, is going to be present once we consolidate. But I also think there's some positives with that because staff will be able to collaborate more together. There's going to be more staff members to have more voices to make some changes there. So definitely, definitely some positives and some negatives. I will say, I think as a district, I think it is possible to make this into a positive change if we communicate clearly and have a plan in place. We have equitable staff support, the messaging to our district and our patrons is effective. I believe that we can minimize the risk and become stronger in the end based on that retention and recruitment.
Good plan, clarity, and...
Yes.
Inclusion.
Yes, yes. Dr. Hitchworth, anything to add on the, on six?
I don't have much on six, just a little bit on seven.
Okay. I'll, I'll start on seven and then let you chime in. So this really, so we started this process last week, probably on Wednesday, and Dr. Adams can attest that this, this is not an easy task. There's lots of variables, so it may seem easy that we just figure out how many students are in a building and figure out how many they can teach in a course load. It's not that simple. It is simple when you talk kindergarten through eighth grade, for the most part, as a middle school, former middle school teacher and principal. It really is as simple as if you have, for example, two hundred and fifty students, then each teacher would have a hundred and twenty-five, so that's two. And then you divide that up by six sections, which is approximately what they teach, it's five now. But then you're approximately twenty to twenty-five students. We can, we can figure out that number pretty quickly, K through eight. When you get to high school, it's a little more challenging because you might have a math teacher who teaches six sections of, let's say, algebra. But then we have to consider the other, excuse me, that they might teach four because they might be teaching trigonometry, they might be teaching a dual-credit course through the college. So it's just not as easy to take that number and divide it by however many sections there are because some of those, some of those algebra sections could be twenty-five students. Some of the sections for your upper-level courses could range between twelve to eighteen. And then you have to take how many were at the other site and kind of combine those together really to get that number on full-time teachers. When you come to special education, ELD, we don't know the population of the students. So we really cannot tell you how many pairs we're going to need, how many special education teachers we're going to need at each site until we know exactly what those students look like. So we are just projecting right now that that's going to remain the same when it comes to special education teachers and ELD. When it comes to administrators, I do believe there's a little bit of room to make some adjustments there. Some other, some other non-classroom-type staff, there are places for adjustments there. So we are working, working as quickly as possible. But when we have five, really six, plans to go through to, to, to figure out these numbers based on certain populations, whether it's third grade, fourth grade, to decide how many teachers we need at each building, it is a, it is a big task, but we're not ignoring it. We are, we're deep in the trenches, and we're going to keep at it.
Are you mentioning middle school, five out of seven, that's only for Core, correct?
Correct, correct.
And the rest of staff is six to seven, right?
Yeah, so I want to talk about our certified staff. And so to evaluate, you know, your classified staff, anytime you have an attendant site, you know, you have custodial staff to clean those buildings, you have your lunch service staff, they're serving lunch to the kids, and then you have ancillary staff from a nurse on-site, possible SRO, campus supervisor. So those are things that we'd be evaluating as we, you know, close different buildings and looking at that. And so some of those ancillary staff, you, that doesn't necessarily mean that that staff would go away. As you have different buildings climb in population, almost double, then you may need to bring over some of those nutritional services staff because they're serving more kids at that building. So it's the same number of kids we're servicing, so just because a building closes doesn't necessarily mean that, okay, the people at that staff, you know, were lucky. So they have to serve those kids at other schools. So those are strategic decisions that would still need to be made in the future. And until those decisions are made, telling you the amount of dollars that would be saved off that are, you know, basically confined to what those decisions would be. So, you know, we're continuing to dig in that and go through that. You know, if we were able to narrow some of our scenarios that we have, that would help in that. And evaluating five scenarios is very hard as well. So on the staffing side, that is the biggest complex puzzle that you can see. I will mention the operational side, that's a lot easier as far as utilities and things like that go. So looking at all the buildings that we had on the list and just pulling those, Casey pulls some numbers for me the last couple days. And so anywhere between fifty to seventy thousand is what we spend in water, natural gas, and electric at, at any of the sites. Depends on, you know, what type of year that we might have, if we had a cold winter or if we had, you know, warmer springs and things like that. And then if you look at the cleaning supplies and different, like deferred maintenance and things that we do, whether it's doing asphalt, painting, parking lots, you can look anywhere from probably a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty thousand a year that we're spending on all those different utilities and operational pieces, separate of staff, that we send spend at a site, depending on the year, the weather, you know, what type of cycle it is for improvements and things like that. So you can, you can bank on that from an operational side when it just comes to that piece. But then you also have the staffing side, again, now you have two, three, four less buildings, depending on the scenario of what you have in your district. So you need as many technology staff, you need as many maintenance staff. All those are questions to be answered as we go through this that I don't have an exact answer for you. But from a just purely operational outside of staffing, tell you about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and eighty thousand per site for all the utilities, all the cleaning supplies, all those different things that it takes to keep the lights on and keep a building running.
Yeah, listen, no, no question, it's a big job. And perhaps we can narrow it down for you, right? Maybe there's a couple here that stand out, we can talk about that for sure. You know, I think, when I think about the recruiting and retention part, especially the recruiting, so, you know, I get, I've met a lot, you know, people like, you know, am I going to lose my job? And, and I'm hoping we're headed to a state of that, 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 that natural attrition and things can handle, handle us, right? Even though there may be some folks asked to move to a different building, but, 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 you know, I'd like to do everything to avoid any kind of layoffs, right?
And we would too.
Yeah, no doubt. And so, you know, the, the beneficial thing I thought of for recruiting would be if we're, if, you know, if, 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 you know, we've got three different sections at high schools that are teaching twelve kids apiece, maybe that becomes eighteen, and then, and then you've got less sections and less need for a teacher. And it would help you in recruiting that certified staff, right? Or not needing to recruit additional certified staff. Because we heard that a lot with the, with the, you know, the inequity in the offerings, right? Is that we just don't have the staff to offer that at all three high schools. And so, again, hopefully taken care of with retirements and attrition, but, but that, that would be my hope, is we got, we got leaner, we got more efficient in that way.
And I'd agree with that. Our, our number one goal is not to get rid of any staff members. Our goal is to make sure that we are efficiently running our buildings, that we have fairly equal and good class sizes, not twelve. I know some would love to say, yeah, I want twelve.
Well, I get it, yeah.
Right, right. But we are, we are not looking to cut staff.
Right.
But we do have opportunities, like substitutes have been an issue for us, and we have an opportunity to take some pressure off of that. And, and even, even where you pit fill openings at the end of the, at the end of, you know, the eleventh hour, some of that might be able to go away as well.
Correct. Yeah, I should have mentioned, we have multiple openings right now for additional staff. We have three, four openings for custodial staff. So we'd be able to then, you know, shift internally to fill those openings we already have, you know, down the road, so.
Dr. Hitchworth, anything on number nine?
Until, staffing is your biggest cost, right? It's seventy-five percent of fund one and two expenses. Until we have that nailed down, it's, it's hard to say. I can tell you that we need to carve out about eight million dollars from the budget over the next couple of years to start getting back to twenty percent. And so doing some sort of consolidation is going to definitely get us there. How quickly that gets us there all depends on the plan that's chosen and the staffing plan around that.
Yep.
And I'd ask, Dr. Hitchworth, what does, what does that look like as far as FTEs go? And you said seventeen to twenty staff per million. So I think that's important to keep in mind as well.
Yeah.
Would you repeat that, Dr. Hitchworth?
Seventeen to twenty full-time staff per million.
So if you're looking to save a million dollars, that mean how many staff members does that look like? Of course, it all depends on support staff, certified staff, the number of years, but it could be anywhere, you know, seventeen to twenty positions equals a million dollars.
Okay, just a few more pieces here. So I do want to draw your attention to board policy, FC, that talks about school closings, consolidations, and reorganizations. And there are specific criteria in the middle of that page before we can propose any school closings, consolidation, or reorganization. There's three numbered items there, so we would want to have those in place before we made an official recommendation. That said, I do want to go over our leadership team discussion. And we did have great dialogue over pros and cons of both of these options, primarily in the beginning, looking at Central and Lafayette versus Central and Benton-Hide combo. And so the majority of our team leaned towards the Central-Benton-Hide combo because, thinking long-term. So we are hopeful to have a new high school in the north. I know we tried that in the south and that failed. I think we have to be mindful of the community feedback, both through the Vision Forward process, all of those community engagement meetings, but also survey data, and I know you all have received plenty of emails and feedback from our community. And so I think we have to listen to that. And what we've talked about is Benton and Hyde, using that as a temporary site until we could repurpose Benton High School to be a bit of a new high school. So this happened in Park Hill, Black County, where it's a very similar situation to St. Joe, where they repurposed parts of the building. And in the end, they did have a brand-new facility, but they also preserved some of that history and tradition. So that is what we are hoping to do in the south. Hyde, we would use temporarily until we could get everything finished at Benton to make that a new high school, keep the Benton Cardinal, which would also save us money on uniforms and signage and logos. and signage and logos and all of those pieces, but then also having a new high school in the north. So, that would obviously be done in phases, but Hyde would help serve as a bit of a swing site until we could get all of that work completed at Benton. The middle school options then, this is just what we've talked about internally, would be having Lafayette serve as the middle school, and then Spring Garden being the middle school. When we surveyed our district leadership team, and I just want to make note, number five wasn't included in that survey last week, so that's just something we created over the weekend per board request, but the majority of our district leadership team picked option four, either one of those, mainly thinking long-term in mind. So, we're all very hopeful to have a new high school in north, we know we need that for our kids, for our community to move forward. And so, if we went with Central and Lafayette, it would be, I think, you're responsible to try to have a new high school in the north at that point. You're kind of leaving out the whole south side community. So, that is what we would propose, and then familiar to the last plan that we had, we would use Central to house all the district operations, that would include grants to computers on Pear Street, district warehouse, TMC, noise, and then also have a conference space where we could house our new teachers every year. Every year, we have to find a different space, and that happens throughout the year when they have meetings, but it would be nice to have a space for at least a hundred people. So, that would also allow for early learning expansion, it would reduce the number of building sites that we have. Obviously, the Spring Garden piece becoming a middle school would happen down the road, and so that's some conversation that we've had internally, just being totally transparent with all of you. But, we've talked a lot for the last hour. We would love to hear what you guys are thinking and give us a direction. If we could get even the option narrowed down to, yes, we can get on board with Central and the Benton-Hide combo, then that would help narrow down our work process a bit. And if there's other options that you want us to consider, we're happy to do that. So, we just, we want to hear from you, so we'll be quiet for a little bit.
When it's raining, when it's snowing, when there's sleet, if there's an active shooter, if someone has crutches or wheelchair, hell, I'll have it.
Sorry, you and Jennifer were speaking at the same time.
I'll go. So, when you said Benton-Hide, did you say Lafayette and Spring Garden as the middle school, when you say Benton-Hide and Central? Is that what you just said? What'd you say on the middle school part?
So, it'd be Lafayette Middle School and Spring Garden Middle School.
Okay, so no Truman and no?
No Truman and no? Yeah, so the long-term plan, we've talked about two middle schools feeding into two high schools, where they'd all have their own facilities as well.
Okay.
That's down the road.
Thank you.
If we were looking at a quick fix right now, just to solve the three versus two high school model, then Central and Lafayette would be the quick fix right now. If you believe our voters will not pass anything, I'd say that would be the option to go. As a district leadership team, we feel more hopeful, and our community would support a new high school in the north, but again, would love to hear from you all.
When would you expect to go back to voters? Like, when you say it's a quick fix, are you talking about going back out this year, next year? When are you gonna have a bond issue, huh?
I think that would have to happen after April of twenty-six at least. So, possibly November of twenty-six, but probably more likely April of twenty-seven.
So, we're gonna, so, April of twenty-seven, so in a year and a half, do we anticipate our fund balance being twenty percent?
Reserve? I don't believe our fund balance reserve ratio will be at twenty percent at that time, but I believe it'll be improved.
Right, so my concern, I have logistical concerns about moving students from one building to the other, when it's raining, sleeting, snowing, when there's ice, that's a concern. I would also want to know how we're gonna move class teachers back and forth, if we're gonna have to move teachers back and forth specifically for specials, that might be my second one, I'll write this down, I'll send an email. My third concern would be students and staff who need physical accommodations through wheelchairs or crutches, that'd be my third concern. And then my fourth concern is that further down on this agenda, we're gonna be talking about a TAN loan to pay our bills, and we're not gonna have the funds build up to be at the twenty percent, and that we're expecting sixty percent of the population, of the voters, to say, hey, you guys didn't manage your money correctly, but that's okay, we're gonna give you more. I do not foresee that happening. Those are my concerns, I'll send it in an email.
Thanks.
Okay, so question. Key recommendations are four A and B, are we able to get those questions answered about those? Because right now-
Do you have questions right now?
I'm talking about the questions that Whitney just asked, are we able to get those answers?
It's gonna take time on the staffing plan, and we'll have to have a process in place for, and much like we did with Mark Twain, where we asked the staff where they would like to be, what grade level they would like to be, what certification they have, so that's a complete process we would go through with our staff. But, the other piece of this that we need to know is if this is happening next year or the following year. We did survey staff on that piece, and I forgot to tell you that one, so we did have fifty-seven point nine percent thinking that we needed to hold off until the twenty-seven, twenty-eight year, but forty-two percent thinking we could do this for next year, and so, we're torn.
How many staff was that?
Just our nineteen district leadership team members.
Oh, okay.
We're torn between the financial situation that we are in right now and wanting to make sure that we do this right. So, we can do it, if you say go, we can do it, but if you want us to be very thoughtful about it, it may take a little extra time. We did meet with a company on Friday, a company called RSP, who specializes in boundaries and feeders, and they lead the facility meetings, so it was just an initial, what kind of services do you provide meeting. We were very impressed with what they can offer. That said, we know we've done the vision-forward process, we've done some of those community engagement events, so again, if you say go and give us that direction, we will work all these details out. I'm going with what was sent to me, this one through nine, and I feel like we're touching on all of those tonight, but we can certainly add to the list as we get more narrowed down on our options.
I know that I'm okay with you looking at more information on four A and B, if it's the recommendation of administration, I know that I'm more hesitant in choosing a plan, you know, that administration is not able to get behind and approve, and so if admin wants four A and B, I would just like more information on the logistics on how to make that happen.
And that was before five was even put in place, so I just want to put that out there too, so we can definitely focus on four A, four B, and five, that'll narrow it down.
Yes.
Get more details in those specific scenarios, I think that would be helpful.
That's my preference, because I-
As thorough as you've been about this information, I have no doubt, and I'm pretty confident, you'd be able to figure out, as you incorporate Hyde into the Benton-Hide complex, you'd be able to figure out how students would get around and all of that, because that's going to be vital. But, I'm confident that it'll be done because you've done it with all the other aspects of this.
We would just have to have a plan and have administration involved and-
Can the board also get information on if we implement this new plan next fall or we wait a year, like about the financial impact of waiting a year? Are we able to get that information too?
Yeah, I can certainly do that. You'd have to assume that this year that we would do nothing to make that comparison, and so, I would still say that we still need to try to hit some of our goals, whether we do school consolidation or not, on looking at attrition for staff. Yeah, absolutely.
I think, I think we'd give it some feedback on Eugene Field, which has, you know, just been a high-performing school, so I'd like for you to take that into consideration.
Number five.
Yeah.
Sure.
And I think that, I think that while you do that, you may want to look at, and I'm not necessarily saying this, I don't know what I'm saying, but as Sam closed Bodie and said, all of the group on the right-hand side of Lafayette, like what your plans was, I think that's a, I think that's another-
It's gonna help with things.
Yeah, I think it's another thing that you, that you're a little bit heading towards, and then it kind of takes away a little bit of the questions between the boundaries between Bodie and Lafayette, kind of takes away some of those questions, because they all go to Lafayette. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I've just got to comment, because I was the requester for Plan Five, and so, yeah, and so I just want to comment, you know, I think Ellison's a pretty high-performing school as well, right? So, both of those schools are doing well. The thing I've always just struggled with, Ellison's just so far out, you know? I assume it was put there by some forward-thinking board that assumed the town was gonna grow that way, and it just never has. So, it just seems like, you know, for busing and it just, that's the reason I did it, you There's no other reason, really.
Yeah.
It just seems so far out.
Yeah.
Well, if you can do facilities, which one is in better shape to last long-term?
Well, that's in that-
DLR report, I was saying that DLR report, it's a scoring for each building. I don't know that off the top of my head, but you can look at, yeah.
Yeah.
I second what Mike said about the Ellison, our kids went to Ellison, and they did for a purpose, it was District of Stonecrest at the time, that's where we lived, and that was a preferable thing to us, and so I've got nothing, I mean, any of these are gonna cause some pain, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, no matter which one it is, it's gonna cause some pain, and so I'm not picking one out that I think is painless. I think it's, I think it's trying to figure out how do we best serve the majority of our community and district.
And long range.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't make sense to try to do a short range if this is the long-range plan.
Right, and that's what we talked about for our district leadership team.
Actually, I think, I don't know if you answered this, but just to confirm, the, all of these plans that are here today, we think we can do without asking for bond money.
Yes.
So, whatever we would need to accommodate, you know, transportation between new buildings or an upgrade, a slight, I'll say a slight upgrade, we could do it with the capital budget that we have, we think.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, you can allow that.
Sure, it wouldn't be the minimum needed.
Yeah.
The pros and cons list that we had last board meeting, that had some of those costs in there.
Yeah.
I'm assuming you're referencing those costs, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we were sticking to those, absolutely.
Yeah, you know, I hear a lot of talk, well, you know, we know we've got, I don't know what it is today, but we've talked about, we've got eighty million dollars and we could go spend that up, and I just don't think that's what we need to do right now.
I agree. I think we all agree on that. There's no need in pouring a bunch of dollars into older facilities that we may not use or may repurpose, so yeah, that's the goal.
My preference, because we're just giving the feedback time, is that we are thoughtful, careful, planned out, but we implement this in the fall of twenty-six.
Okay, thank you for saying that, that gives us some direction. People often ask me, do you get, do you have a sense of their urgency, if it's next year, if it's the year before? I don't know.
I feel like I've heard from other board members that said, you know, we kick the can down the road and we don't do something, I think that we, if we know we're heading this way, and we can figure out we're heading this way, and it doesn't require a bond solution, then the solution's up to us, and by us, I mean you, and you guys, I'm sorry. But, I think, I think it's in our, it's in our power that we could make that adjustments and work towards that, and give us time for the hiring plan, staffing plan, and I would like to see us, see if we could do it beginning of fall of twenty-six.
If we're going that direction, I would encourage you to convene the hearing for board policy FC, where you have a hearing or a series of hearings to hear from the public.
Right.
That'll be an important piece.
Thank you. I think they would like input.
Well, we do have those town hall meetings as well.
I thought that too, there is one already scheduled, if you wanted to use that for that capacity, but if you wanted to have one sooner than that, I would understand as well.
I'd say we definitely use the town hall meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Especially since we haven't really decided on an agenda for that yet.
And I feel like that we need to narrow, that we can't keep having five plans. I feel like we need to narrow it down, because I don't want to waste your time figuring out things, and then we say, oh, just kidding, we don't really want that one, I feel like we need to get it narrowed down so we're using administration time most effectively, and then I feel like we could get maybe more definite answers that we think we need if we're using the time for just a few plans instead of five.
Because I thought we were looking at four A and B.
And five.
Four and five.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will say Plan Four B is, that won't be much work, because once we do four A, the only thing we're changing is-
It's just a feeder path.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, then it's really like only having two to look at.
But, Tom, you did mention a plan with Bodie going to Lafayette, which, that's also not a huge shift, because it's just moving them all to one place.
Yeah, I just, I think that's, I say it because I think that's what you guys will end up wanting to take a look at anyway, you know what I mean? Yeah, I don't think that's an extra ask, I mean, I know that may be some extra time, but I think it's, I think it's on the path, you know, if we can begin to see what's the path gonna look like in the future, and we can say, well, while we're moving, let's move to that step we're gonna move in the future, I think, I think it'd be worth the time to do that now.
So, we will eliminate one, two, and three, look at four, five, and then the plan shifting Bodie over to Lafayette Middle School. I will have those, Jake, we will have those by the end of the week.
Wait, what?
We got five, I got it.
Okay, next thing.
Any other questions on this?
I just have one other thing I want to say, I think when we look at this, we have to be careful saying, well, this building is a good performing building, and this building is not a good performing building, when we start thinking about the feeder path and what buildings we keep open and we close, because when we start shifting these districts around, that's going to shift kids to different districts, and I think we have to just be mindful of that, and I think I say that coming from having worked in a title building where we worked really, really, really hard, but I think we need to look, kind of think about the condition of the building, that kind of thing, and no offense, Tom, when I say that, that the curriculum is the same for everyone at every building, and I think looking at the giant picture and not worrying about what the test scores are, but looking at what's going to, in the long run, be the best for everyone, and I kind of agree with you, Mike, Ellison is a long, a long ways out there, but then you look at the age of that building, and when we think long-term, is it going to cost more money to transport children all the way out there, or is it going to cost more money to do repairs on one of our old buildings? And I don't know what the answer, and I don't know that anybody can get the answer to that question, but it's tricky all the way around.
I agree with you, though, I think that's a really good point.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I was just thinking about that, so.
And I agree with that, because, I mean, we already know we're sitting on new age back and everything else, so I think we need to look at the conditions of the facilities.
Yeah.
So, something to think about, in October, I have our budget reduction plan that focuses on budget reduction for this fiscal year, and then also, as we get to next month and go down the road, also have plans for what future years look like with school consolidation. So, not to confuse the difference between the two, but the budget reduction plan in October is truly this fiscal year of how we're looking to get our budget deficit down for this year, and then, of course, any future plans will be reorganization just for those pieces going forward, so just have a guy.
That's good.
Okay, anything else right now? I think that's a lot.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, that was a lot of work in really short hours, yeah.
Yeah, Jake, sounds like you did a little bit too, so.
Okay, agenda item number three. Kim, I'll let you take it.
I just had a question for our leadership that, and I'll just read you my email, said I'm wondering what happened to the idea of sending our questions about our agenda items ahead of time. Said, I'm wondering if it happened to the idea of sending our questions about our agenda items ahead of time so our administrators can get answers to us before our meetings and won't be surprised or caught off-guard during our meeting. This was said to us in our work session with our MSBA representatives, and we agreed to this as a board. Where I feel like we're being disrespectful of our administration when we ask why we don't have more than what we originally asked for. And it pressures them in the moment to, uh, to decide or to give more information that they're not prepared to give. So I'm hoping to return to that because that's why we set the agenda early in the week. So we get all the information ahead of time, ask our questions, and those questions can prompt us to do other questions in that kind of feed. So we're not out here, and so it felt like we were, um, pressuring our administrators. So I just wanted to remind us that that's what we all agreed on when we were with our MSBA work session, and we talked about the agenda. So we agreed with them that that's something that needs to be done so we don't surprise them, that there should be no surprises in this. And, um, I think it's a bad look and it's disrespectful of, of our superintendent and those she works with. So that's why I asked to put it on here. So we're just careful as board members, yeah, I don't think they mind asking questions and receiving questions. But when we have the opportunity to do that ahead of time, to open up opportunity for them to gather more information and present it, I, I think they're good.
I appreciate you saying that. I just want to clarify, I know when we have discussions, you're going to have questions throughout the process. I, I have questions throughout the process when we're in meetings and we're having dialogue. So I don't want anybody to feel like you can't ask a question. That's okay. But if there's pieces of information that you want, please let me know. This was very helpful, um, and I'm happy to provide anything, so didn't want to, didn't want people to think they can't ask questions.
Yeah, that's, that's not what I'm saying. I think there are logical questions that are going to come up in the meeting. But as much as we can prepare you for what we're going to ask ahead of time, I just think it's a cleaner look and more respectful of you and your team to be prepared for what we're asking about.
Mike, I know that you mentioned a comment about this if you'd like to speak, because I know that you have some questions about it.
Well, yeah, look, I mean, um, to me, the, 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 sometimes we go into a discussion mode, um, you know, especially when there was a report out, a superintendent report, admin report, that doesn't really carry a lot of pre, uh, uh, you know, information on the agenda. So it is unreasonable to me that we won't ask questions that weren't brought up the day before. You know, the other, the other thing is, I mean, quite honestly, we were a lot, we're a lot better than we were, we, before. We, we, we left ourselves no time to kind of work some back and forth. And now, we do, and it's much better, I think, on both, for both sides. Um, but I will say, even in that, you know, some days, from the time the agenda hits to the time Thursday at noon comes around, it might be a day and a half, and, um...
It's hard to get it in.
Absolutely. And so, and so, um, I guess what I would take away from that, Kim, is, 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 is the respect word, which is, hey, you know, as we, as we navigate this, as things come up, as we ask questions that might be new to the administration, we, we, we just do it in a respectful way that says, hey, we, we understand we're hitting you with this, but let's talk about it.
Yeah, and I think that's where I was headed with that, Mike.
Perfect.
I agree.
So, and I, I agree. I, and I thought that was a good improvement we made on the agenda preparation at our previous meeting, and I think we need to take advantage of that. I do agree with that. Tonight, did we get off track in discussion? It seemed like we had to have this discussion tonight.
We're trying really hard too to put everything into assembly. Uh, I didn't get the capacity sheet on there, but I'll send that to Donna tomorrow.
She knows, it's good.
But we're trying really hard to pump, to pump that with as much information that you may need to make decisions and have discussions. So, um, yeah, we're trying to do a better job on our end, too.
Well, and I know sometimes I don't even get to my agenda until the weekend. I work and I have stuff to do, so, but you always turn around and answer them quickly, so thank you.
And I had also contacted MSBA about this, well, because I know that in the training, you know, that they were like, no surprises. And so I contacted Jeanette that made a comment about the no surprises. And it's my understanding, and I can, I can let you guys look at the email, I received it. I received it earlier this morning. It's my understanding, it's like what you said, like, if you're able, you know, to ask the questions as you look at the agenda beforehand, ask the questions, you know, but it is not the intent to not ask a question in a meeting, even if it's a difficult question. It's okay for the admin to be like, I'll get you that information later, okay? But not, well, well, I'm not going to answer it because you asked at the last minute in a meeting.
Yeah, that was not my intent in saying that. I just feel like we need to be careful and respectful. That was the point. Because there are going to be questions that we don't think about even ahead of time. So that was the point, of being respectful as we do that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to, um, to number four. It's got Mark's name by it, only...
G policy.
Is that?
It should not.
Isn't that us?
That's just...
Yes.
Well...
It's a reminder to review the policies?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a reminder to the board to make sure to review G personnel.
How many are there, Donna? How many are there?
There's a lot.
A lot. It's a lot, okay, but the cool thing is, is that there's a couple, we're like in the middle, you know, of looking at it as a group right now, I mean, anyway, but that kind of helps, just, just a reminder to...
We've got a lot. You're getting to the last few, so...
We've got a lot, we can do a lot more.
Yes. Okay, number five?
Can we go back to number four real quick?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just a couple notes, um, policy GB EBC, um, which talks about... It's titled Criminal Background Checks, but there is a mistake in there. Um, we have the current, or we have the old address for the district. So we're going to recommend changing that to the new address. So I wanted to make a note on that. I think that's it.
Jennifer, how to corrections?
Yeah, there's something was wording twice. I just want to love, and the email, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Hi, Dr. Hedgecore.
Thank you. This is to give you some information about a resolution that I will ask for the board to pass in our board meeting in September. Um, I do not have that full resolution. Um, at this point, I'm working with Gil Armbeil, who is a bond counsel, to write out that resolution. And so the resolution is going to ask the board to approve a tax anticipation note for us to have a line of credit with UMB Bank, who is our current depositor. So when we come around to paying our expenses in the months before we get our local property tax, we can ensure that we have, uh, the dollars to pay those expenses. And so, you know, a lot of people talk about that reserve ratio of ten point zero two percent. That is on June thirtieth, that is a snapshot. If you looked at our reserve ratio in February, you'd probably see it at fifty or sixty percent because we just got our full amount of our local tax revenue. And we take that tax revenue and we invest it. And so we invest that, those dollars, so over time, as the months go by, um, we use those revolving investments to pay for expenses as we go on. Um, just to let you know, outside of our local tax effort, that's about fifty-five percent of our revenue that we get for our district. The other forty-five percent, um, comes from, um, our state and, and county, and so, and some federal. So, um, when we hit those months, when you look at November, November is going to be the lowest, uh, reserve ratio month that we have across the board, and it's typical for any district. Um, you know, we get a little over five million dollars from the state every month for that state payment, and that's consistent. But our expenses every month is about twelve million. So we use that local tax revenue to float those dollars over every single month. Well, because our June thirtieth reserve ratio is so low, that's going to put our, obviously, November ratio lower. And we, I want to ensure that we have that line of credit ready to use to pay for expenses in November. So then, once we get those, that local tax effort in December and January, that loan is paid back immediately to the depositor, uh, of course, with, you know, small interest fee. And then January comes and we are flush with our local tax dollars. So, uh, happy to answer any questions, uh, that I have. I know, uh, we did a little research today, and I don't believe, uh, St. Joe's had a TAN note in the past. Um, this is something that you have, typically districts that are below that fifteen percent mark do use a TAN note depending on their combination of state versus local revenue. Um, but there are several districts that will do this in the state of Missouri this year, so...
Yeah, tie two different agenda things together here, but this is, this is, this is an indicator, um, that we need to act sooner rather than later on, on some of the efficiency changes we were talking about.
Yeah.
Am I, am I reading that right?
You are, it's, it's lost opportunity. I mean, that interest we pay on this, I mean, we're going to get a line of credit, so we're only going to borrow what we need.
Right.
We won't borrow more than what we need, and so that interest that we have to pay is lost opportunity, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and reason quickly.
Go ahead, let me...
Uh, sorry, I can't see, I can't see Tom or Mike, so it's hard to see what you have talking. Um, as far as the, as far as the being a line of credit, is there collateral that has to be put up for that?
The collateral is our tax, local tax effort that comes in January.
It is the tax, okay. And then you said the interest rate, has that changed? What, or do you kind of have a roundabout idea where that's going to be?
I believe it will be somewhere around four or five percent. Uh, but we, I will have that for you at the, uh, board meeting in two weeks.
Okay, and then we'll just do it, so as far as the process goes, we'll do a resolution for you, and then you'll take, you'll take the note, or you'll take, yeah, you'll take the note out on a full two months? Or will you have to do it multiple times?
So you'll have the line of credit, so let's say, for example, I'm just, you know, rounding some numbers here. Let's say we need a half million dollars in October, so we'll pull that half million down, only be paying interest on that half million until November would hit. And then let's say we need to pull down four million in November, then we pay interest on four point five million past November, and then we start getting that local tax revenue in January, and we would then pay that loan back in full.
Okay, so, all right, do you have a roundabout idea of the total amount that we're going to have to, um, borrow?
Cash flow projections right now are showing somewhere between five and eight million.
Okay.
Does that include getting the, um, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five federal payment in?
Yeah, so that is the big question mark. So I believe we're going to receive that federal payment for last fiscal year, um, in September. But until it's in the bank, you know, um, but I believe it will be coming.
So does the eight million include getting that in or not getting that in?
So if we get that in, that's really going to help the amount that we would have to borrow, that would really lower that. So I am very hopeful that that comes in, um, in September, and then that way, when October, November come, the amount of deals in the standard will be greatly reduced.
I mean, just to clarify, it's, it's not really optional, it's like a necessity at this point, correct?
You are.
Okay, thank you.
And number four, for you saying it's October, November, and December?
So we start to receive some of those early birds that get those bills and then write the check right away. Um, we'll restart receiving some of that income in December, and it just depends on the number of people that do that will be the amount that we get in December, so the amount of deposit we get in December fluctuates. And so it just all depends on how early folks pay those property tax bills, uh, if we would pay it all back in December or have to wait till January.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, if there are no more questions? Also you, Dr. Hedgecore?
Yes. So the next item I wanted to bring up was our district insurance renewal. Um, currently, we are with music, um, and music is an acronym, so I know we love to talk about, um, acronyms and not say what they stand for. Um, so it's the Missouri United School Insurance Council is what music stands for. And basically what music is, is just like we have a self-insurance pool for our healthcare, um, we have a self-insurance pool for our, um, workers' comp insurance, our liability insurance, and property insurance. So that's what music covers. Uh, about ninety percent of the districts in this public schools in the state of Missouri use music. It's a great consortium, um, it is, it is a great system that allows districts to get money back if they have good, um, financial years that they don't have to use your insurance. In a fully insured model, if you do not use a lot of insurance that year, that insurance company keeps those proceeds as profit. In a, in a self-insured model, that comes back to you. And so you can see in our self-insured model, we get what's called payday retrospective adjustments, uh, each year. And you can see the amount of dollars that's been paid to back, back to us as a district, uh, each of the last five years. Uh, it's a pretty substantial amount. Another thing about music is our deductible is a thousand dollars. In other fully insured models, it can be anywhere from a hundred thousand to two hundred fifty thousand dollars for wind and hail. Uh, matter of fact, there was a district in Missouri that got hit with two different storms in two different months. So two hundred fifty thousand deductible this month, two hundred fifty thousand available next month. And so currently with our financial situation, I do not want to put us, um, at further risk, um, by looking at fully insured models. And music really is the only self-insured model that makes sense. Um, now, I know with St. Joe, we have our, um, cycles for going out to bid, and it's been six years for insurance, so our cycle is up. So we need to let music know, uh, by October first, if we are going to go out for bid or not, to put them on alert, um, as part of that process. And another thing is, just please note that, uh, Missouri does have a statute that for self-insurance pools, they're already going out basically to bid for that whole consortium for reinsurance. And so since they are the ones going out to bid for reinsurance, in essence, they are going out to bid for the group. So, um, statutorily, you're, we're not required to go out for bid, um, for this, but I wanted to bring this to the board and leave it, the decision up to you, if you would like me to go out to bid or not. Um, something to think about if we do, typically you pay a broker, um, when you go out to bid to solicit those bids. And typically, the fully insured companies are the ones that pay for those broker fees. Self-insurance pools do not. So if we go out to bid, realize music's still the best, we're going to be out the money for the broker fee and be with the same company we had all along. And so that's one of the reasons I want to bring it to you, to look to maybe save some money on a broker fee if music feels like that is the best solution for us, which for ninety other percent of the, you know, public school districts in the state, it has been. And based on the retrospective adjustment program that we get paid back, I believe it is for us too. But if you guys felt like you wanted me to go out to bid, I'd be happy to do that, but I just wanted to ask that question. So obviously, there's no decision needs to be tonight. Uh, if you have any questions leading up, when that would come in at the board meeting, I'd be happy to, to answer those, so...
My only, I, I agree with what you're recommending, by the way. But my only comment to that is insurance rates have gone up significantly. And, um, I don't want us to be surprised if music comes back and it's higher than what we have, and then we wish, well, I wish we would have gone out and...
Sure.
Shop that, but I, I don't think shopping would end up getting us a better rate anyway. I, I think our best chance is negotiating with music to, to feel what we can do and try to hold that down. But I, I've, based on other insurance, particularly property, I think, um, we should be expecting an increase.
Right. Something else to think about, six years is kind of the timeline we put ourselves on to rebid this. Um, you know, when we're with music, it's a year-to-year situation. So if in two years we feel like that the increases have just been so much, we can just trigger us going out for bid at any time.
Okay.
Uh, but six years was just a cycle that St. Joe had established for, um, our insurance.
Okay, if there are no other questions? Thank you, Dr. Hedgecore. Okay. Change in, in the policy, Mr. Crowe?
Yeah, so at our last meeting, we had an informational item about staff absences and tardiness. Um, it was requested that we reach out to our, um, teacher groups to kind of get their opinion. Um, so what we had, um, suggested was, in our, in our current policy, it says that, um, for absences to be excessive, staff can miss no more than five days in a month, fifteen days in a semester, and thirty days in a school year. We had suggested, um, looking at that and making changes to where it's no more than five days in a month, eighteen days in a semester, excuse me, nine days in a semester and eighteen days in a school year to kind of get, um, our staff to where they are reporting ninety percent of the time, similar to our students. Um, the data that I received, um, from MSTA is seventy-one point eight percent, um, of their members prefer the policy not to change. Um, and then NEA reported that ninety-three point three percent of their members prefer that the policy not change. Both groups did express that they would like to see something added in there about our administrators being able to have conversations. about our administrators being able to have conversations with our staff members. If they've started to miss several days, if there's some threshold that we could agree on or add in there. My recommendation, seeing the data and really conversing through email with both groups, is not to change the policy because of the staff's voice. I think moving forward, we can have some conversations about maybe revising what it says in there, about having some of those conversations to, to get it early. And then also maybe looking at some poss, some possible incentives for staff who are, who are showing up to work and things like that. I've, I've learned a few things over the last few weeks that I'll talk to Dr. Hedgeworth about. I don't know what the cost of that would look like and maybe now is not a good time to take a look at that, but that is my recommendation moving forward. If you guys have any questions on that.
Am I a comment? I do appreciate your recommendation. Just because I do get the problems and the issues, you know, that the staff miss for other reasons other than just, I want to miss like, earlier this afternoon, I attended the funeral of one of our students and there were staff members there.
True.
And they use their time, you know, to be there. And so I think it's important, you know, to listen to the people that are actually affected instead of just like having a look at the problem and being like, I want to do this, you know. And so I do appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Okay.
I think we need to include that in all our benefit review though, as we go forward and say, what's the benefits we have, what's the cost of that and, and how does that compare with the whole benefit? I, I don't want, I wouldn't necessarily, I know we're not really discussing that. I, I don't know that I'm for memorializing those numbers that we currently have. They still seem excessive to me.
I think, so I just want to add in here, I mean, I, I understand the need for this. I, you know, I see where the administration is coming from. I think we need to be cognizant of the full picture. I mean, right now we have staff who are hearing us talking about budget cuts, who are being told no on things that they're wanting or needing for their classrooms because of a budget issue. They're also hearing that there's, their buildings may close, they're hearing about, you know, reduction in staff. I just think there's a time and I think it, it would be detrimental to the staff if this is something that we move forward. And I think we need to keep that in mind as we move forward with all the policy revisions that we make.
Good point.
Thank you, Whitney.
Well, I think adding that in there, that you can talk to them after a certain point with hope too.
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at that and see, see what that wording needs to be. We can, we can converse with our, with our team and legal and make sure what we're putting in there is accurate.
And thank you for looking at the incentive part.
Anything else on this?
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. I think, is the next one also yours too?
It is, yes. So again, at the last meeting, there were some concerns about specific staff members being on the personnel report that have begun working prior to being board approval. As looking through policy, I did find out, and not saying that we should continue doing things that we've always done because what I was told is this is what we've always done. But after looking through policy, I did find out that current policy says we are not allowed to hire individuals who have a contract without board approval. But that also does create some, some constraints for us because if we do need to hire a staff member, instead of placing a substitute in front of them, we would like to be able to get that certified qualified teacher in front of our students. So therefore, I am recommending some wording to be changed within this policy to where if it is absolutely necessary that we are able to do this. It would still be board approved. It would just be board approved afterwards, no longer than 30 days to be able to get these contracted employees, these certified teachers in front of our students legally because we do want to follow policy.
So legal, how does this work? So if we hire someone and put them on a contract and then for whatever reason they don't gain board approval, I'm assuming we would have to pay out the contract? Or how is it, how is it even legal to be able to do this?
So I did check with other districts and this is other districts that are part of MSBA and this is some wording that we found within districts within the state of Missouri.
But how would it, how would it affect their contract? So if the contract is executed and then the board comes through 25 days later and says, no, not, I'm not saying there's a high probability that that would happen, but we do have the authority to do that, then what happens? Do we have to pay their contract bill?
No, you don't. They do not actually get a contract until you approve them. So they start working knowing that they aren't fully approved until you approve. So the contract doesn't get signed in their hand until you approve at the board meeting.
So we, okay.
But they need other criteria?
All but the contract, is that what?
Correct. They would, the whole process of background check and, and all the vetting, you know, recommendation from the administration, they've started work knowing they're approved pending board approval and then once the board approves, that's when they get the contract.
That's key. Yeah, they know, they know that when they start work.
That's what it says. It says provided all other conditions of employment have, have been met. Background check, certification, all of that.
So how would they be paid between the time that you hire them and the time they'll be approved them?
They would, they would be paid as, as a certified teacher based on whatever step they were going to come in at that, that we would normally approve them at. So if they were range four, step 18, that's what their, that's what their rate would be.
And their benefits would apply from when they started or when the contract?
Correct.
The, the other thing I've thought about this since we were here before, and I should have sent it over ahead of time, Kim. That's a good point because I have thought about this. I even think I mentioned it to somebody. Is the thing I'm most interested in is when we're doing net adds. Replacements aren't as big a concern to me. You guys are the ones doing that and taking a look at what the qualifications are and, and, but then, but the net adds are ones that affect the budget. They're going to cause an increase and those are the ones that are, I'm probably most sensitive about saying probably require board approval.
Right. We are not adding positions right now. It is, it is 100% replacement. If somebody is suggesting on adding a full-time employee, it has to come through, through us. Really, it's going to start with, with her and then Dr. Hedgeworth and most likely that is not going to be approved.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm talking about even on an ongoing basis. I think, I think what we don't, I think that that would be an area we wouldn't, wouldn't let the board be surprised. We added somebody and we didn't check it out. I think the board should be involved if, if there was an add to.
And my questions are like, I think I would just like more information about the processes of other districts who are able, you know, to do this and not have a change in the policy? Well, because my, my, I'm just kind of nervous about like, we're not following the policy. Okay, but we're going to now alter the policy to our practices and not alter the practices in order, you know, to fit the policy.
I would say if we aren't willing to change it, what we've been doing in the past, I believe, based on how I'm interpreting the policy, is we have not been following it. If we do not want to hire these individuals until it's been board approved, then we're going to have to have special meetings often because this individual that was on the last, well, there's one on, on the one today who was hired about two weeks ago. We would not have a teacher in front of those students for two weeks until you guys approve that. And that's our last agenda item today.
But you said this is what other districts are doing against us right here, correct?
I don't know if other districts are on, on what I'm suggesting.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I'd be fine doing it that way.
But.
I don't understand, I don't understand how. We have a meeting every two weeks. The last supplemental report that I looked at, we hired people that same day. So we came to a board meeting that night and they started earlier that day. We could have easily started them the next day and we have someone starting the next day. I just, I, I don't see how we, how it's a surprise. Like it seems like, it seems like with a little bit of attention and organization, we can get this done in timely manners. I'll tell you too, I'm not, I'm not keen on doing this. Again, it's only one vote because we have in our supplemental that we're going to approve after we get done with the work session. We have two positions. One, we have two movements that we're going to approve, one's from June and one's from July. So I, I mean, I hear the ask of, you know, we'll get it to you in 30 days, but last meeting we had somebody from March. Now we have somebody from June and July.
Tom, you made a comment earlier and I just want to respond because we kind of skipped over it. If the board did choose to go this route, then we would provide that communication and market about that in his report each week.
Yeah, thank you.
I just know that I'm hesitant on altering the policy, you know, to fit the current, current needs when, I mean, it's a policy, it's a reason it's a policy. I also contacted MSBA. And you're right about the exception. Okay, but that's like, it's not like it's a normal practice among school districts. It's like an occasional occurrence. And so, and when you're looking at our reports, it's a normal practice and that's my hesitation on this.
I don't think it would be a normal practice. It, it says when conditions exist which necessitate the immediate appointment of an individual, which would be these individuals who were hired the day before to have this qualified individual in front of students. That's the purpose of the addition, not to do it whenever we choose. Would only be most likely in August, September, October. Beyond that, it's normally not, not an issue because we're, we're in a position right now where we need to have these individuals in front of students versus having a substitute in front of our students, whether it's one day or 14 days. That's just my opinion.
And the, and the language that you're recommending is the language that other districts use.
Correct. But I will, I will say you are correct. It's not a common practice.
Thank you.
Okay, I know right now we have kindergarten opening because there's so many children in one particular school. So if we don't, let's say tomorrow we hire somebody to take over that job, then they're not going to get to start until the end of the month. And so those kindergarteners are sitting from the first day of school till the end of September in really crowded classrooms and that's, that's not good. So then that would mean, let me make sure I understand that, that we would need to have another meeting like this week in order to hire that person so they can get started to teach kindergarten and not have 26 children or whatever the number is right now. And if we don't choose to do that, which would mean we'd have to have at least four people who could meet to make that decision every single time, then those kindergarteners are sitting in crowded rooms and kindergarten at the beginning of the year is really, really, really important that those kids get established in a room or otherwise. And that's a lot of learning that's not happening right out of the chute. So I think we just need to think about situations like that. Do we really want kindergarteners sitting and do we want to meet 49 times in the month of August every time that is hired, knowing that we would, we have this option where it would be only when necessary? So you're not just going to go out and hire people. And what about when you hire parents? Because those get hired sometimes along the way as well, correct?
According to policy, these are only with employees that have contracts.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, another cool thing though, is you mentioned another meeting in this week. There is another meeting in this week, a meeting Thursday. Like, like, I mean, there's, there's always ways in order to make it work. I just, I want the cleanest, most uniform according to policy.
But Thursday is not a, a meeting meeting.
I know, we can add a special meeting as we're doing this evening.
Can we also, rather than, because I really feel like we are, this, this feels very rubber stamping to me or this is how you like, you move into that where, you know, we don't have any authority because it's already been done and so we're not going to, you know, whatever. Why can we not talk about our process? We, we meet every two weeks and it's my understanding when we talk about going to a work session and then a board meeting, and we're going to do it today, just add a special meeting to the end of it, but it's going to take some, some organization and some planning to say, okay, we have this position open. We know when we're going to interview for it. Like, we should be able to plan this out. We, we know when the positions are open. We can schedule around the Board of Education. Thousands of other school districts are able to make this work.
Well, I was just looking to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I just want to clarify that. I, I have personal experience. It doesn't always work out as you would like. I was at Lafayette High School on a Friday night about five o'clock. A teacher applied for a science position and I immediately hopped on a Zoom. And that's the position we're at sometimes for these hires. And this kindergarten example is a current reality. So if someone did apply tomorrow and we were able to get a good teacher tomorrow in front of these kids, I wouldn't want to pass up on that opportunity. But that is a reality of where we're at with hiring.
But that, but that, I have a problem. And I understand having to make, okay, someone, we have someone available. We're going to make an offer, but no one should be walking into our classrooms, you know, two days after we've met them. I mean, it's a, it's a process, applying for and getting hired. We just need to build in approval of the school board into that. It, it takes more than two weeks to hire and onboard an employee. I would think that we could, we could schedule this within 10 business days.
Well, well, and then it also kind of makes me nervous, you know, to where, well, well, like, I know there's been like change orders and everything like that and big like expenditures approved after the fact. And I'm just kind of nervous about altering the policies and, you know, in order to fit the actions and not just kind of learn a better process, I guess I should say, but.
We're just trying to get the most qualified candidate in front of students as quickly as possible, as quickly legally as possible. I will say the, the last couple that we've allowed to start early have been retirees. So we already have a background check on file. We already have certification and that's why that process has moved so quickly.
I, I think we've had a good discussion. You'll be bringing this to the meeting to vote on. That's what I think we're at that. We're not voting deny. So, you know, I think we've had a good discussion back and forth and I think we bring it forward and you bring the recommendation that you feel like and we'll vote you air day.
Any other comments or questions? If there are none, Mr. Casey?
So at the last board meeting, you had approved the original quotes for the expansion of the Hilliard parking areas. At that time, I did tell you that we were working on other options to utilize the remaining part of the art refunds from the county. That was approximately $30,000 that was remaining. I did, I wasn't able to get all the numbers in time in order to submit it for the last board meeting. So I'm here now. So what, what I'm kind of, what I'm looking at and what I'm anticipating to do, I don't have a diagram. I'll have a diagram for you. But what it is, is on the backside of the building where the new structure was built. What we did, whenever, we cut through the curbs, added the building to the center of the parking lot and we remained keeping that same curb through the aisle way down through the parking area. What that has done is blocked off the access to all our unloading dock area to easily get into there. And also it somewhat created a little bit of a drainage issue that is very minimal at the moment but has capabilities to become something significant in the near future. What this remaining 30,000 does is it opens up that area, allows for the trucks to be able to get in and out. It also allows for the stormwater. It also allows for the stormwater drainage to reach the intended purpose, the intended place to go that we're already currently redoing. So I just kind of want to bring that about. I will bring a full plan to you at the end of this month. Obviously, we're not, we're not voting on anything tonight, but that's, that's the plan going forward. Questions?
Looks like there are no questions. I appreciate your time and your work, Mr. Casey. Thank you. Hello.
Hey, so this is just for me, a contract for Tiny Todd Town, which Parents as Teachers puts on for our entire community at the Civic Arena. And so it's a contract to be able to rent the Civic Arena for that purpose.
And in the contract, are there any additional changes or such?
No, it's actually, we do it every year. It's the same, yeah, just the fee that they charge us. So I put it on here so we could approve the next board meeting. I wasn't sure if I need to put it on or not, so.
Guess we might be early, but better safe than sorry, right?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. If you have any questions?
Isn't that used to be called Safety Town?
Uh, no, it's different. It is different. But it is like a town, and so they always have inside there. A lot of times, there's, there's sometimes a school bus, there's sometimes a fire truck or an ambulance. It just depends. But then a whole bunch of community organizations. I'd encourage you all to attend if you can. You'll be getting an email about it soon.
Thanks. Okay, our next meeting is in exactly two weeks. Is there a motion to adjourn into a special open session?
A motion.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mike. Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion passes. All approved. I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Yeah, sorry.
No, you're good.
Um, Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion, please? Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Kim and Rhonda?
Uh, Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes. All approved? Okay, items under discussion. Mr. Crowe?
All right, personnel report has been submitted for your review. Also have a copy of the supplemental report at your workstations. Just note on the personnel report, there is one certified position that did start last Tuesday due to one of our buildings having to open up another kindergarten section. If you don't have any questions, I ask for a motion for approval.
A motion?
I have a little question. There's a question, a second. I have a question, and it's just a, I'm just wondering, and I know that other people are wondering, if there's like a retirement or like a resignation, why does it take a while to get on the personnel report?
So are you referring to number one on section three?
And on section four? I'm looking at this one, at the one that was in our folder. Yeah.
Section four?
Yeah.
So that would be because that individual, that, that position was not filled until now, and then that individual that they took that place would have, would have resigned or their last workday was 6:30. So that doesn't mean they started 6:30.
Yes. So it's not approved on, under the board, a resignation? A retirement is not approved under the board until, until the replacement's chosen?
I'll have to get clarification on that one.
We've always approved them, or I don't know about this, but we've approved them when they've happened, partly because of the early retirement of this type in. So I know that that's not been the case for all of them. I also, you mentioned this, the retirement from June 30th. There's also a summer help hire from July 14th. And then I didn't quite hear what was said. There was a certified contractual employee that has already been hired without board approval. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that violates the policy that we just talked about. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm just going to be really honest. This is what really frustrates me, is that we were told that the policy, we know the policy. We talked about whether or not to follow the policy, but we're already, it's already not being followed. And I just don't think that we would accept this type of behavior from frontline staff, from teachers. And I'm really frustrated, and I'm going to vote against it for that reason.
Just some clarification on supplemental, that individual. We just found out that she was not returning, and her effective date was 6:30. So that's the reason. We just now found out about her resignation. So it was posted to 6:30, which was the last day of our staff member's contract.
So she's not worked?
Correct.
And we just didn't know she was not coming back?
Correct. And then answering Ms. Lanning's, Ms. Lanning's question, at the last meeting, we approved it. So we assume that's what we were doing moving forward to continue that practice. And again, after investigation, and then after hiring this individual, we, we did realize that we were not following policy. So we just need clarification on what direction do you want us to go when it comes to, which I know we will decide at the next meeting, because we will bring that policy change for a vote. If you choose not to vote on that, we just need the direction on whenever we have situations like this, are we going to not have them start and find a substitute? And then call a special meeting.
I think if they meet all the criteria, and you guys hired them, it's fine to wait.
Could you repeat that, Whitney, what you said?
We have to follow the policy until the policy is changed. So if, so I get that we're saying that we didn't do the policy right, but then when we find out about the policy, then we have to follow it until the board changes the policy. That's, that might just sound like how policies should work.
Are there any additional questions? Okay, if there are none, is there a motion for approval?
Do you have a motion?
There's a motion, a second.
Could you repeat that? Ms. Kearns made the motion, and Ms. Miller seconded it.
Okay. Would you call the, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, no, we're going to address it next month. Yes, I'm a yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Five, two. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning? Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.